Good morning and welcome to the Hawaii State Senate Committee on Commerce and Consumer Protection. This is our Friday, April 5th, 2024 agenda in Conference Room 229 at the Hawaii State Capitol to hear Governor's nominations to various boards and commissions. This meeting is being streamed live on YouTube. In the unlikely event that we have to abruptly end this hearing due to technical difficulties, the committee will reconvene to discuss any outstanding business on Thursday, April 11th at 9:30 a.m. in this room 229. And a public notice will be posted on the legislature's website. For testifiers participating remotely, we have a two-minute testimony limit. We have received and reviewed all of your written testimony. If you're online, your audio will be muted and video disabled until shortly before it is your turn to testify. As is our customary practice, we respectfully request that you summarize or clarify your written testimony instead of reading it verbatim, especially if you're online, because we can tell when you're reading from a screen. Your two minutes are your own. You can feel free to use them as you wish, but we have already read your written testimony. And with that, what I would like to do, and we've notified the nominee, you know, without objection, members, I would like to move GM 705 to the end of the agenda, and we will take up the remainder of the nominees, move them out, and then clear the space for Mr. Yost and his nomination. So first up, we will take on Governor's Message 706, James Tam, for consideration and confirmation to the Board of Electricians and Plumbers for a term to expire June 30, 2028. DCCA Director Nadine Aondo in support.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Member of the Committee, Nadine Aondo here on behalf of the DCCA, standing on our testimony in support of the testimony.
Thank you very much. We also have Al Itamoto from the Electrical Contractors Association of Hawaii in support. These are written. We have written testimony from the Hawaii Electricians Market Enhancement Program, Ryan Takahashi in support. IBW Local 1186 Damian Kim in support. IBW Local 1260 Kika Bukowski in support. And late testimony from the Plumbers and Fitters Local 675 Matthew Brady in support. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Good morning.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Committee Members. Kika Bukowski on behalf of IBW Local 1260. We did submit testimony in support of Mr. Tam, and we stand on our testimony in support, but just wanted to add a few comments. As you know, this session, you know, has brought on some issues involving the electrical industry and all the different sectors involved. And we just want to make note that although we are completely confident in Mr. Tam, I've known Mr. Tam for a number of years, as long as I've been involved in the construction trades industry, and we feel that his legal experience is exemplary, and we look forward to working with him. But we did want to just comment that these, you know, his appointment is one of three public appointments to a seven-member board with, you know, and we would like to think that the public members' intent is to look out for the public's interests. You know, there are numerous or several different sectors within the electrical industry of which there is no representation on the ELP, E N P Board currently. And a lot of the decisions that are made at the E N P Board have impacts beyond their authority and their jurisdiction to other sectors of the electrical industry that impact the work that we do and the members that we serve. And so we hope that, we look forward to working with him, but just want to make note that we, we hope that in the forward, in the future, we could have a more diverse representation from all sectors of the electrical industry, as the decisions they make can have major impacts on these other areas that, again, like I said, sit outside of the purview and authority of this particular board, but are impacted by the decisions that they make. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Okay. Would the nominee like to speak?
My name is Jim Tam.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair.
So, you know, for the nominees, don't worry about the clock.
I don't have a long essay to read to you or say to you. I just say that I'm happy to say I'm a recovering attorney. I'm not doing that anymore. Okay, so.
No offense taken.
At White Star, I'm more working with financing Hawaii projects now for Hawaii developers. And we, we hope we can do more financing, especially in the affordable housing area. And it's much more, it's a much more fulfilling mission than what I was doing earlier in my life. So I'm willing to serve if it's my fate to do so, and I have, I think, the skills to independently evaluate and vote in the public interest on any matters that come before this board. That's all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Members, any questions for Mr. Tam? Okay, seeing none, thank you again. We'll move on to the next nominee. Governor's Message 707, Janet Permianu, for consideration and confirmation to the Board of Professional Engineers, Architects, Surveyors, and Landscape Architects for a term to expire June 30, 2027. The one and only testifier is Sheena Choi from the Board of, from the Board in support.
Honorable Chair, Vice Chair, Member of the Committee, Sheena Choi, Executive Officer of the Board of Professional Engineers, Architects, Surveyors, Landscape Architects. The Board stands on its testimony in support of Miss Permianu's request. Thank you.
Thank you for standing on your testimony in support. That's all the testimony we've received. Is there anyone else who would like to comment on this nomination? Okay, would the nominee like to speak? Good morning.
Hi, good morning. Thank you, Honorable Chair and Vice Chair and Member of the Board of the Committee. Excuse me, I'm bringing this forward because I'm a little nervous. I haven't done this for years, but I've, I am seeking a second term for the ISLA Board. And it's a wonderful, I'm as a public member, and it's a wonderful experience, growing up as a youngster in Kahului many years ago, many, many years ago. I've been in the construction business. My father has been in the construction business. So we've, we've dealt with and worked with engineers and architects and landscape surveyors. It was, and engineers, and I have family members that are also in the engineer, engineers in my family. I've always put the public first and protection of the public first. Growing up in Kahului, again, I was a JPO, and so that's when I first recognized the importance of protecting the public. And I've graduated from the University of Hawaii Dental Hygiene Program. I have my master's in public health. And so worked many years with Head Start and with Koko Kalii Valley and have been also in the clinical setting. So my, one of my strengths, it strengths is being dental hygienist and being 12 years of experience of being on a board for dentistry. And I'm currently on the Board of Directors for National Testing Agency and Examination Developer, and that's C D C A, REB, and SEDA. And so I am one of the two dental hygienists that, and one of the two that has, has ever been representing Hawaii, the state of Hawaii, ever in dental hygiene on that board. So I've learned a lot through being on this board, and I appreciate all the different aspects of this board, and I would like to continue one more term, which is my maximum, to serve with the ISLA Board again. So is there anything else you want to ask me? This is my security thing, so.
You did great. Thank you very much for coming up and testifying and stepping forward to serve again. Members, are there any questions? Send to Richards.
Yeah, thank you. And you did well, so don't worry. I had to go back and look when I was reading through, seeing dental hygienists, and then I was looking at the architects and surveyors, going, now wait a second, do I have the right information together? And so I was curious how you're going to tie this together, and you did. Serving nationally on the boards, that bringing that institutional type of thinking is very, very helpful. And also, it's outside the industry, so it brings a different perspective. And for me, that's really important when I'm looking at it. I also saw that you're part of RICO, and I serve in a capacity in that as well. Brings a different perspective, so I appreciate that, and I'll be supporting you, but you did well.
Oh, thank you. I was a little concerned about.
No, no, you did good. Like I said, when I was reading, I was concerned. I said, did my paperwork screwed up? Anyway, all good. So thank you, Chair.
Any other questions? Okay, I have a question.
Okay, yes.
That I've asked another nominee to this board.
Yes.
So I think that nominee would think it unfair if I did not ask it of another sitting member, which is for your response and feeling about an article that was published in Civil Beat in September about a licensed architect who was convicted of a felony for bribery that subsequently left, that subsequently led to other convictions in the city and county of Honolulu's planning department. And the article primarily spoke about how that individual is still licensed. And before Sheena gets up, I want to acknowledge that RICO, RICO has responsibility for the investigation and has not completed it. However, this person appears to still be licensed. And as of the writing, which was several months ago, was still maintained active permits. And so going forward, because it's, that situation will be resolved when it gets resolved, and then a decision will conceivably, after the resolution of the investigation, will come before your board. And so without speaking to that specific individual and your action that, that might be taken in relation to that, can you just help us understand your feeling about that situation and your role and perhaps duty on the board to account for, you know, the perception that this has created around your body?
Yes. Personally, I was very appalled by that because that situation, because it was, I am truly ashamed that this has happened and that I always believe in the truth and being honorable and doing the right thing. And so as a board member and current chair, I don't know how I got a, become chair of this board, but I'm a public member, and, and it truly is an opportunity for me. That our, our protocol is to submit to RICO, and RICO will go through this case, and we're, we haven't heard anything from RICO yet, so when we hear something from RICO, we're going to address it. And yeah, I'm not, I'm not happy with that situation.
Do you think that there is potentially more that could be done by your board or by the DCCA or by the legislature if you were to make a recommendation to account for what's happened and provide some assurance to the public that we're taking reasonable steps to make sure it doesn't happen again?
Yes, we do have, we do have the protocol as a board to go through RICO first, and so that's what we're waiting for. So if you can hurry them up, that would be wonderful. So that we can address it at our next meeting.
So noted.
So that's what we're waiting for, and, and once we get that word from RICO, we're going to address it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Members, any other questions? Okay, thank you very much for coming up and taking questions on top of talking. We'll move on to the next GM. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Governor's Message 708, Nicholas Ching, for consideration and confirmation to the Motor Vehicle Industry Licensing Board for a term to expire June 30, 2028. First up in support, DCCA Director Aondo.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Member of the Committee, DCCA stands on our testimony in support of the testimony.
Thank you very much. We also have written testimony in support from Stephen Chow. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Ching, good morning.
Hi, morning.
If you'd like to make a statement to the committee, I'd like to disclose that I know the nominee, and looks quite dapper this morning. Thank you for stepping forward.
Thank you.
If you'd like to address the committee, please feel free.
I don't have much to say other than, you know, my, I've been an attorney in private practice here in Hawaii since 2012. I guess as far as board experience, I've been the president of my condo association since 2015, and it's a nine-member board, and so I do have some experience being on a board and dealing with those matters. Other than that, I just want to thank those who have supported my nomination to the Board as a public member, and I look forward to serving and giving back to the community if I should be confirmed.
Thank you very much. Members, any questions? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Ching, for making yourself available and stepping forward to serve. We'll move to the next.
Thank you.
Member on our agenda, Governor's Message 709, Edward Chu Jr., to the Board of Private Detectives and Guards for a term to expire June 30, 2028. For the Board of Private Guards and Detectives, Rhonda Roldan in support.
Hi, Chair, Vice Chair, Member of the Committee, Honorable Director, Executive Officer of the Political Contractors Department of the Boards and the Construction in Support of Mr. Chu.
Thank you very much. That's the only testifier we have. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Okay, do we have the nominee? Do we have the nominee online?
Not present on Zoom, Chair.
Okay, not necessary. We have, we have interviewed the nominee prior to the hearing. Members, any questions for the Board? Okay, we'll move on. Governor's Message 631, Destiny Irvine Halama, for consideration and confirmation to the Motor Vehicle Repair Industry Board for a term to expire June 30, 2028. Director Aondo, DCCA in support.
Yes, Honorable Chair, Vice Chair, and Committee, stand on our testimony in support of this nomination.
Thank you for standing on your testimony in support. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Okay, do we have the nominee?
Not present on Zoom, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Members, unless there are questions for the DCCA, we'll move on. To GM 737, Miles Kamimura, for consideration and confirmation to the Board of Electricians and Plumbers for a term to expire June 30, 2028. Director Aondo in support.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Member of the Committee, stands on our testimony in support of this nomination, Mr. Chu.
Thank you very much. Next, we have IBW Local 1260, Mr. Bukowski.
Standing on our testimony in support.
Thank you for standing on your testimony. Brian Lee in support. And late testimony from the Plumbers and Fitters Local 675, Matthew Brady in support. And IBW Local 1186 Damian Kim in support. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Okay, do we have the nominee?
Not present on Zoom, Chair.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the next nominee. Governor's Message 739, Danny Takaneishi, for consideration and confirmation to the Hawaii Medical Board for a term to expire June 30, 2027. Hawaii Medical Board, Randy Ho in support.
Honorable Chair, Vice Chair, Member of the Committee, my name is Randy Ho, an Executive Officer for the Hawaii Medical Board. The Board supports the reappointment of Dr. Danny Takaneishi to the Board as a licensed Honolulu County Member.
Thank you very much. Hawaii Medical Association, Elizabeth Ignacio in support. We have Maria Chun in support. Lee Buencenzo Lam, Dean Lee Buencenzo Lam in support. And late testimony from Gary Belcher of the Hawaii Medical Board and J.C. McIlannick of the Queen's Health System. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Okay. Mr. Takaneishi, good morning.
Good morning. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, you're fine. Please go ahead.
So aloha, Chair, Kioho Kaloli and Vice Chair Fukunaga, other members of the committee. First of all, thank you very much for this opportunity to provide some testimony, and I'm not going to reiterate what's already in my materials. I just wanted to make a few points. You know, one is I was born and raised in Hawaii, in the Mukali area specifically, proud graduate of the public school system, went to the University of Hawaii as both an undergraduate and for my medical education, and had some of my training in Hawaii and also in the continental United States. So Hawaii is someplace that's very near and dear to me. A lot of what I've done for pretty much my entire professional life is to really help to serve the public, I guess, if you will, at least for me, one of the most rewarding things that, that I do. And so being on the medical board for a second term will allow me to do it in a way that I think is important. But the second point that I wanted to make is, you know, having been a first liner, you know, doing surgical ICU and having to take care of patients who had COVID from 2020 and in a time where, you know, we were short on staff, but we made it through because we knew we had to, and we knew that was the thing that, we just didn't think twice about it. But what it really raised, I think, to the consciousness of everyone was the importance of having an adequate and a healthy workforce. So I think what happened is with your help and other members of the state legislature, last year Hawaii became the 38th state to join the Interstate Medical Licenseure Compact, which is a step in the right direction for preparedness, should something ever happen to that degree. The second thing is Representative Martin had called me in January about a prior bill that I guess had not made its way through, and it was looking at how to better incorporate individuals who have medical degrees but had not completed postgraduate training. So that brings the second point, that while the Board has to work within a very narrow scope under statutes, there are things that the Board can do to work collaboratively with others such as yourselves and, and the hospitals, the medical associations, you know, and other stakeholders, the public, to find ways that we can do this that's very responsible. So that brings up the second point, that there are things that are very important that I would hope to be able to potentially shepherd with my colleagues on the Board, again, honoring our statutes and working within our statutes, because that is our, that is our construct and our context. But I just wanted to say that I seek a second term for all the reasons noted, and I hope that you will give me that opportunity. And my final closing point is that I apologize, I would have been there in person, but I'm actually in Washington, DC for a one-day meeting, because there's this National Advisory Commission that was formed to look at just what Representative Martin had asked me about at a national level. And I was fortunate enough to be tapped into that, to find ways that through a number of large national medical education and advocacy organizations, such as the American Medical Association and the ACGME, that we can work to create a white paper, so to speak, so that medical boards can use that as a template to go forward in a very balanced and responsible manner to make sure that at all costs, public safety is always protected. And so with that, I'll stop, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Takaneishi. Members, any questions? No need to apologize for your absence. I do appreciate you making yourself available online, and thank you again for stepping forward to serve. So if there are no other questions, we'll take a brief recess. Okay, reconvening this 9:30 a.m. agenda to hear Governor's Message 740, Mr. Robert Gregg, for consideration and confirmation to the Elevator Mechanics Licensing Board for a term to expire June 30, 2027. First up in support, Elevator Mechanics Licensing Board. James, good morning.
Aloha, Chair and members of the committee. James Skazuski here, Executive Officer of the Elevator Mechanics Licensing Board here in support of Chair Gregg's reappointment. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Skazuski. And we also have written support from Mark Yamane of the International Union of Elevator Construction Constructors Local 126. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Gregg. Good morning.
Yes, good morning. Sorry, I would have been there, but I'm stuck at work, so I couldn't make it out there.
Again, that's totally fine on this committee. Would you like to make a statement to the committee?
Oh, yeah, you know, I'm just seeking reelection for a second term. I've been on the Board for the past four years, I believe, and I've enjoyed the time there. You know, I've worked real close with James and the rest of the Board members to make sure that we get our guys licensed, our apprentices registered, and yeah, I just want to continue doing that and make sure that our conveyances are worked on by licensed elevator guys.
Okay, thank you very much. Members, any questions? Okay, seeing none, thank you again for stepping forward to serve and making yourself available for the hearing. We'll move on to the next nominee. Governor's Message 741, Sheri Tokumaru, for consideration to the Board of Pharmacy for a term to expire June 30, 2028. First up in support, James Skazuski, Board of Pharmacy. Good morning.
Aloha, Chair. Thank you for your time, James here, standing on our written testimony in support of the reappointment for Sheri Tokumaru. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Ray Matsumoto for the University of Hawaii in support. We have Ronald Taniguchi in support, Jared Prudencio in support, Nicole Young in support, and Alana Isobe in support. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next nominee. Governor's Message 742, Wayne DeLuz, for consideration to the Motor Vehicle Industry Licensing Board for a term to expire June 30, 2028. First up, we have Hector West for the Motor Vehicle Industry Licensing Board.
Hello, Chair and members of the Board. My name is Hector West, Executive Director of the Hawaii Industrial Licensing Board. The Board stands on this testimony in support. Thank you.
Thank you for standing on your testimony in support. Robert Gardner for Bank of Hawaii in support. And late testimony from the Hawaii Automobile Dealers Association in support, John Uikawa in support, and Melissa Pavasek in support. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Okay, Mr. DeLuz, good morning.
Honorable Chair, the rest of the committee, I would love to have been there, but this is a merimonic week. I would love to have been there, but this is a Marry-Monica week on the Big Island, and we don't have enough jets. But it's going well. We always know when the Marry-Monica is coming because we get a lot of rain. So Hilo blesses everybody. But thank you for the opportunity to give testimony today. I've been, I was born and raised in Hawaii, five generations of Portuguese. I'm a second-generation Yukar franchise dealer. The, my focus in serving on the motor vehicle board is to achieve improved protection for consumers, as I've done in the past, as well as ensuring that the auto dealers are in compliance of the ever-changing laws that govern us. I have a lot of experience working with the Chapter 437 that, excuse me, that governs auto dealers and would appreciate the opportunity to serve on the board. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much for making yourself available and for stepping forward to serve. Members, any questions? Okay, thank you again. We'll move to the next nominee. Governor's Message 7:43, Kenneth Obensky for consideration to the Motor Vehicle Industry Licensing Board for a term to expire June 30, 2028. First up, we have Nidinando DCCA in support.
I'm Chair, Vice Chair, member of the Committee, on behalf of the DCCA, please stand and argue for your testimony.
Thank you for standing on your testimony. And from the Office of the Mayor, I'm not sure which one, Robert Command submitting testimony in support. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Okay, I'm told the nominee is not available. Any questions for the DCCA? Okay, then we'll move on to the next nominee. Governor's Message 7:44, Carlton Williams to the Motor Vehicle Industry Licensing Board for a term to expire June 30, 2028. Director Ando, DCCA in support.
I'm Chair, Vice Chair, member of the Committee, stand on your testimony in support of your appointment in support.
Thank you very much for standing on your testimony. Kathy Castillo in support. Wendell Lee in support. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Okay, Mr. Williams, good morning.
My name is Carlton Williams, and I am honored to be considered for this position. I believe I understand the purpose and the process very well, having done two terms on the Board of Public Accountancy until a few years ago, and also having worked with automobile dealerships throughout my career, both in Honolulu and Hilo since the early 1980s. So I have a good understanding of what the profession is, and the dealers, automobile dealers I know are very concerned, as with other professions, about maintaining the integrity. So they're concerned to, about the public interest, as are others. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Members, any questions? Okay, thank you for joining us today and for stepping forward to serve. Next, we will move to Governor's Message 7:45, Sheri Mizumoto for consideration to the Board of Acupuncture, term to expire June 30, 2028. One testifier in support, Director Ando, DCCA.
Sir, Chair, Vice Chair, member of the Committee, DCCA stands on his testimony in support of this motion.
Thank you for standing on your testimony. And next, we have the nominee. Good morning.
Good morning. Aloha, everyone, and thank you today for considering me for the acupuncture. This would be my first time, although, hi now, by the way, and notably right now, I am on a couple of rotary boards. I've been rotarian for many years. And just being out here right now and serving our community like we have been as rotarians since this wildfire has just given me more passion to help the people of Hawaii, especially on safety and health, with moving acupuncture forward.
Thank you very much. Members, any questions? Okay, thank you again for making yourself available this morning and for stepping forward to serve. Okay, so on the nominees that we've just heard, I would like to note that we have interviewed each of these individuals, even the ones that were unable to make it, make themselves available for the hearing today, and I'm prepared to make a recommendation. Members, are there any issues with that? Okay, so without objection, I would like to recommend that we advise and consent to each of the following nominees that we've just heard in one motion. Those are James Tam, GM 706, Janet Permiano, GM 707, Nicholas Ching, GM 708, Edward Chu Jr., GM 709, Destiny Irvine Halama, GM 631, Miles Kamimura, GM 737, Danny Takonishi, GM 739, Robert Gregg, GM 740, Sheri Tokumaru, GM 741, Wayne DeLuz, GM 742, Kenneth Obensky, GM 743, Carlton Williams, GM 744, and Sheri Mizumoto, GM 745. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote to advise and consent, Chair votes aye.
Thank you. Vice Chair also votes aye. Senator McKelvey.
Yes, sir.
Senator Richards. Senator Awah is, excuse, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you very much. Congratulations to all the nominees. We'll take a brief recess. Okay, reconvening this Friday, April 5, 2024, 9:30 AM agenda to take up our last nominee on this agenda, who was actually our first. Governor's Message 7:05, Colin Yost for consideration and reconfirmation to the Public Utilities Commission for a term to expire June 30, 2028. First testifier we have in support, Hawaii State Energy Office. Good morning.
Good morning, Mark Glick, the Hawaii State Energy Office, Chair, Vice Chair, member of the Committee. We stand on our written testimony, strong support of the nominee, and available to answer any questions if I may.
Thank you, Mr. Glick, for standing on your testimony in support. Next, we have Nidinando, Director of the DCCA in support.
I'm Chair, Vice Chair, member of the Committee, Nidinando here on behalf of the DCCA in support of the validation of Mr. Yost. Stand on your testimony.
Thank you very much. Kiko Bukowski, IBW 1260, excuse me, in support.
Chair, Vice Chair, Committee members, Kiko Bukowski, IBW 1260, in strong support of the nominee. And I just, I know you, you know, it would be better for me to stand on our testimony, but I just wanted to say real briefly that, you know, the union has been very appreciative of Mr. Yost the last year. He's been very helpful and responsive. When we've, we've been trying to become more involved in the PUC process, to better understand it and to try to bring a voice of labor to the table because the decisions they make impact our members. And we just appreciate what the PUC has been doing and appreciate working with Mr. Yost for the last year and strongly support his reapportment.
Thank you. Sandy Wong in support.
Not present on Zoom, Chair.
Thank you. Leo Asunshin in support.
Chair, Vice Chair, members, I'll stand on my written testimony in support of the nominee.
Thank you very much for standing on your testimony. We also have written testimony, and feel free to come up if you desire, from the following individuals. In total, we have 35 pieces of testimony submitted, all of them in support. Gwen Yamamoto-Lau of the Hawaii Green Infrastructure Authority, Ernie Lau of the Board of Water Supply, Jody Robinson, Blue Planet Foundation, Mika Munikata, Ulupono Initiative, Ella Aki of Solarc, Paul Orem of Photon Works Engineering. We have a Mr. Kuramoto of Solar Help Hawaii, Rachel Asu, Malama Solar, Noelani Derrickson, Tesla, Sandra Larson, AES Hawaii, Caroline Carl, Hawaii Energy, Matthew White, Kristen Izumi-Nitao, Mark Anderson, Dolan Eversel, Malia Eversel, Patricia Van Curran, Jason Suapaya, Virginia Tinter, Jaco Van Delden, Naomi Kuai, Keala Peters, Scott Sato, Jeremy Roberts, Roy Skaggs, Carl Friedman. And late testimonies submitted, again, all in support, from Rocky Mold of the Hawaii Solar Energy Association, Neil Martin of Elko Inc., Hale Takazawa, and Steven Rajma of Sunrun. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Yost. Good morning.
Good morning and aloha, Chair, Vice Chair Fukunaga, members of the committee. I'm Colin Yost, I'm a commissioner on the PUC, and it's been my honor to serve the state of Hawaii for the last 17 months. It's been memorable and challenging experience, but I've enjoyed it and really appreciated my colleagues and the other commissioners. So I'm here before you, obviously requesting a full term of six years, and I'm committed to continuing to do my best to ensure that the PUC is an effective regulator, that we are independent, that we are objective, and that we, you know, do our best to ensure the safety and the reliability and the resiliency and the affordability of the services that are provided by our public utilities, which are all necessities and are very important to the people of Hawaii. So thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Members, questions? Somebody got to go first. Okay, Vice Chair.
You know, the last time you appeared before us, you spoke about some of the work that the PUC has been doing on the wildfire investigations. And you talked about how, you know, you took many of the concerns to heart and were planning to follow up with your colleagues. And so today, we really want to see if you have anything to report back to us since that time.
Well, just yesterday afternoon, we were engaged in a whiteboard session to discuss next steps, and we did take the recommendations of the Senate to heart. We agreed with the intent of all the resolutions that are in SCR 182, SR 156, I believe. So we are moving forward to figure out other actions to take. We are awaiting, you know, the results of the Attorney General's Report, the Maui Fire ATF Report, and also some of the conclusions of our own staff relating to the investigation that we've been carrying on specifically about the operation and the utility infrastructure in Lahaina that the utility has conceded ignited a fire in the morning of August 8. So we are waiting for more specific kind of conclusions and recommendations to us from our staff on those questions. We've also been paying attention to other testimony that's been received even just recently before the Senate, actually before the House most recently, in the Finance Committee, paying attention to information that is becoming more public and more specific about potential causes, potential issues that may need to be addressed with our infrastructure. And we are, we're paying attention to all of that and seeking to follow up and learn the truth and figure out the right answer, what to do next.
Okay, well, I'm happy to encourage other members to follow up. I do note that, you know, in some of the previous testimony on those resolutions, the PUC was characterized as more of a reactive body rather than a really proactive body. And the times that we are in seem to really call for a much more proactive role. So, you know, hopefully, as we move forward in the next two weeks, there will be opportunities to see broader, I guess, authority being exercised by the PUC. And we hope that we will see some exciting new solutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair, and we hear you loud and clear.
Members, questions? Senator Richards.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Chair. Interesting time, and I appreciate the fact that you've embraced what we were talking about through the resolutions. On point, following up with Senator Fukunaga's statement about proactive, not reactive. And I think we, my expectation, I think we as senators, our expectation is PUC takes a very firm role in getting this to be resolved, not just letting it sit. And so I would strongly encourage to keep pushing forth aggressively to get this thing attended to because letting it sit is not what we're expecting. We're expecting good response. And so interesting time that you signed up for and you're going through right now. You have a lot of support coming forth, but the intention is now this is when we really need to have some expectations met. So thanks for willing to continue. Thank you, Chair.
Senator McKelvey. Thank you for being here again. You know, I just, I wanted you to touch upon, you know, some of the things, you know, obviously we, part of the legislature's job is to look forward. Lahaina was a canary in the coal mine, and I saw it on display yesterday over at the convention center when they had the steam kids there, Energy Office, I don't know if they're in the room, was there, with the display showing all the different overlays. And I called up a transmission overlay as well as a wildfire overlay, and you look at Mauna Kea, and that's an area over there that's potentially. What is the PUC looking to do, whether you're commenting on some of the bills initiatives or as a body to try to be more, to be proactive insofar as hardening of the infrastructure, trying to identify areas that are jeopardy of vegetation, wind map events? Can you tell us the committee how you can help all communities move forward insofar as trying to achieve that goal?
Yes, absolutely. I can point to two things which I think are some of the most important things we're doing, serving on the state wildfire mitigation working group with, you know, it was commissioned by General Hara, and a number of other state actors are on that board, are on that working group. It's looking at all the solutions. The utilities are in that conversation as well, are attending those meetings, not just HECO but also KIUC. And we are talking very concretely and specifically about the near-term improvements that need to be made, and some of them are already being made and are causing other issues as to reliability. When you have new fast trip settings imposed on lines and new blockers of the former reclose mechanisms that used to cause electricity to come back on automatically, there are now blockers in many lines which require that you have actual people go out and walk the line before they re-energize. That's a sensible, immediate precaution to take in a number of these very sensitive and vulnerable areas, but it's not a long-term solution. Everyone realizes we don't want to be shutting off the power, you know, every couple of weeks or every week when you have the wind blow a little bit strong or a tree branch just, you know, bounce off a line but not break it. So a lot of very specific conversations about solutions and new technologies are happening there. The other one is that we issued an order requiring all utilities, not just electric utilities, to issue natural hazard mitigation reports to the Public Utility Commission, which will be made public, dealing not just with wildfire but also hurricanes, tsunami, all other natural disasters that we face here in Hawaii. And those reports will be coming in August. We will be looking at all of them. They'll be public, they'll be transparent. They should give all of us a pretty good idea of where all of our utilities are in their disaster mitigation planning, and hopefully will reveal vulnerabilities, weaknesses, things that we need to improve. And we expect a number of dockets, a number of other initiatives will come out of those reports as we review them, as utilities, you know, recognize they have work to do to make their infrastructure safer and more reliable.
Just two questions if I may. The other one is, it seems to me, I'm kind of like, I'll just be blunt, like yelling at the wall. I've always been trying to advocate for undergrounding and not, I understand it can't be applied universally globally, you know, for many reasons, cost me one of them. But surely, in the example I just gave and what's happened, there might be areas where the Public Utilities Commission could identify segments, if you will. Is there going to be any action of the commission on this front with the utilities to look at this kind of, if nothing else, where you have high-risk, vulnerable areas for this kind of strategy?
Absolutely. Yeah, that will definitely be a strategy going forward. And as you say, because of the water table level in certain areas, it's not possible to do 100% undergrounding. It's also extremely expensive, but absolutely. undergrounding, it's also extremely expensive, but absolutely, I believe there are areas where undergrounding is going to be the right solution, and that is a subject matter in that state wildfire mitigation task force. It's focused on that as well as a lot of other things.
And there could be new technologies too that might be coming down the pike to create some kind of a hardening but yet not going completely underground?
Yeah, I mean, you've got better insulation of lines themselves, right? California's looking at this, right? PG&E proposed to the CPUC, the California Public Utilities Commission, to underground everything, and that would be a massive expense, well beyond the public budget, and the Public Utilities Commission there is looking at where can we find balance, where can we find alternatives that in certain areas may be almost as effective as that? Another idea has come up recently, and I don't, I can't vouch for this method, but you could put lines on the ground in heavy concrete conduit, and it's just lying on top of the ground, the conduit would be strong enough that if a tree fell on it, it would break the conduit but not the line. So, I mean, that's a new technique that's being thought about, and it might be appropriate in certain parts of Hawaii.
I think it would work very well, because Blue Rock has been a challenge, brought up geological challenges, you have ravines and such, where hopefully that'll be something the Commission will use as an example, that there could be a way to harden the infrastructure but not have the hurdle. And just final question, Chair, your power generation has been a big issue. I hear from independent power producers, there's been no RFPs put out for power generation. How are we going to achieve this goal of renewable energy if there's no movement on generation or quest for goals on generation? Any thoughts you might have on that side?
Yeah, we actually did, the utility, HECO did approve a number of bidders for RFP3 that just finished its cycle, and those haven't come before the Commission yet, but all of those projects are actually public and online. I mean, I noticed there was one concern, of the concerns mentioned in the whereas section of the resolution specifically to Maui, right, wondering what's happening with projects that were canceled on Maui and delays and so forth. So the RFP3 for Maui, it contains 40 megawatts of firm biofuel with a 2027 energization deadline. It also contained three solar plus battery storage projects, which add up in total to 80 megawatts of generation plus 240 hours of megawatt-hours of storage, and the utility is representing to us that that will actually be adequate to offset the other fossil fuel plants that are going to be retired sometime between 2028 and 2029.
Are they retired on the line at all? Even if it wasn't retired, that brings up the issue of generation facilities in tsunamis and inundations.
That's right, you're right, and that, I'd say, utility is taking that into account in its RFP process, the citing of them, but yeah, the Kahului and the Maalaya are the ones that are now scheduled for retirement, right? Maalaya is somewhere between 2027 and 2029 because of unavailable equipment, they just can't, they can't keep fixing it, and then you've got Kahului that's getting shut down because of air permit issues from the Department of Health. HECO has asked for an extension into 2028, and thus far, Department of Health has been granting those extensions, but we've got to line everything up, obviously, to make sure that when old things go away, we have something new to replace it. That's kind of a big lesson of the whole AES coal plant situation, right, is that we didn't have adequate generation resources and we had to scramble and backfill with temporary programs, and that was a challenge.
Thank you very much, Chair, I appreciate the questions.
Chair. Senator Richards.
That triggered a conversation, Big Island and our generation challenges. And I think you already touched on it, aging infrastructure and maintenance maybe not renewable, but that firm power side, so any comments on that, Big Island perspective?
Yeah, the transition on the Big Island and all of our islands, it needs to be done responsibly and, you know, from a deliberate planning standpoint effectively. So we need to make sure we have adequate resources that are coming online when others are retired, but we also do have concerns about maintenance. Now, there's different issues with that, some of them really are specific to certain power producers that have unique issues that have become extremely challenging recently on the Big Island. Others, though, are maybe systemic, and we're looking at, we get outage reports, every time there's an outage, even if it's a small one, those come into the PUC, we look at those, we compile them, we consider whether there are patterns that might be visible in those outage reports, what the specific causes are of each outage, and whether you've got unusual number of outages for certain causes that, you know, are different than what we've seen historically, and whether we need to take action based on what we see in those reports. So we are concerned about that throughout all of the territories in Hawaii, and, you know, we're taking that seriously.
Okay, yeah, I, you know, again, initial conversation, proactive, not reactive, because we're facing a lot right now, and this is the time to look at it all. So you guys are going to be busy, but I think this is time, we really need to do that for the community. Thank you, Chair.
Members, any other questions? Senator McKelvey?
I know, but, you know, energy seems to dominate, speaking of which, energy seems to dominate the conversation, but PUC is more than that, right? Especially in the area of shipping, inter-island shipping, transportation regulation. We have ADC and DBED looking at trying to basically create huge economic pillars on ag, ag diversification, shipping it to new markets, but obviously, to do that, you have to have, what challenges in that area, what work do you see in that area that PUC is doing to address those concerns and try to realize this economic potential that both ADC and DBED have talked about?
Well, we only have jurisdiction over inter-island shipping, but we did just talk to Young Brothers the other day, they came and gave a briefing to us on their five-year strategic plan and their, how they are doing, you know, getting through it, what their plans were for replacing some of their barges with new ones, and agriculture did come up as an issue. It's something, they have this milk run concept that they've been recently using, but it's only for automobiles right now, but they've told us they want to extend it to include agriculture, and that they've been talking to agricultural producers on all the islands. They also mentioned cattle as another specific industry that they'd have to take special accommodations to really make it work, but they are committed to figuring that out and expanding what they currently offer in those areas, and they recognize there's a need, right? Like, we don't have adequate shipment of agriculture between our islands, we all have a collective interest in increasing the amount of local food production because of, I don't know, was it 85%, 90% imported or something like that, right? So they seem to get it and care, we'll be watching carefully, we will be encouraging that type of expansion because we know that it's clearly needed in communities on all islands.
Thank you, Chair.
Members, questions? Senator Lee?
Thank you. I apologize, I just came from voting in another committee, so I missed all of the discussion that happened prior, so if I ask something that's duplicative, I apologize to everybody. But thank you for the opportunity. I think in 2014 or 15-ish, the PUC released sort of a white paper, commonly known as the Inclinations Paper, which sort of charted out kind of all the major issues that were present at the time in the utility rate payer compact and model, I guess, as we knew it at the time. A lot of those were focused on trying to resolve the tension between utility shareholder interests and interests of rate payers, and there was some action taken since then to try and, or by not only the legislature but also the PUC, to try and better align those Do you now, I guess, having been on the Commission for a number of months now, have any thoughts as to whether all those issues, underlying issues that the inclinations highlighted have since been addressed, and where are we now?
Yeah, the inclinations are still kind of a foundational guiding document for the PUC, we look at them still. Some of their, some of the discussion in the inclination, some of the ideas are outdated at this point, but many of them are not. You know, it focused on leveraging new technology, it focused on accelerating the transition to renewable energy, but doing so in a reliable manner. I think a lot of the big issues discussed in there are still unresolved, frankly. In the HECO territories anyway, KIUC has, you know, amazingly been faster and more effective at getting to a point where they are not only, you know, 60-plus percent renewable, but they've also drastically reduced the effects of price volatility from the oil market, and that's why their rates are lower than the rest of the islands. And that success is, you know, it's important to understand it and look at it, it also is a very different grid and a different island community than the rest of the islands, but we can still learn from that, and I think, you know, there's a lot of work left to do. There is a point where updating the inclinations might be appropriate, and especially, you know, what we've seen after the tragedy of Lahaina is that our infrastructure has more vulnerabilities than I think any of us realized, and we've got to confront those realities, we've got to figure out how to improve it, how to make sure that Lahaina never happens again, and also how we continue the path towards renewable energy as quickly as possible and remaining a model. Like, the last time I came before this committee to talk about, you know, becoming a part of the PUC, you know, I really focused on how are we going to do this effectively, how are we going to continue to inspire others beyond our small island state to accelerate their own transitions away from fossil fuel production, because we are uniquely vulnerable as a state to the effects of climate change in many, many ways, and to the extent that we continue to be innovative, proactive, and inspire other jurisdictions around the world to do similar things, like, that would be a success, that would be a success story for us, so I hope that we can continue on that path.
And part of that, part of those findings at the time were that the existing paradigm, as it was then, was somewhat inefficient and effectuating sort of the broader intent of policy goals and other things, which ultimately resulted in probably higher costs than needed to be the case to rate payers. Said a lot of that is still yet to be resolved, what would those forward steps look like or could they look like?
Well, we've got performance-based ratemaking since the time of that, those inclinations, right? PBR, that is not fully implemented, right? We just went through our first attempt at making it work and coming up with performance incentive metrics or PIMS to incentivize the utility to do things faster and more effectively. We're evaluating that now, we're trying to understand how we can make PBR more effective as a regulatory tool and more responsive. I think, I didn't answer one other question earlier about RFPs and how are we getting enough power, and the integrated grid plan, you know, just recently was approved by the Commission or accepted, I should say, by the Commission, and that contemplates an RFP process of this continual, that'll have, like, every 18 months, we're going to have a new RFP cycle so that developers of energy projects can have some, you know, some consistency and some certainty about what's coming and when, and we'd like to continue to improve the RFP process itself, which in the past has been overly burdensome. We think it got a little better with RFP3, but can get even better, and the development cycle in the past of five years to bring a new project online, this utility scale is way too long. We'd like to try to reduce that to three years, or even better if we can somehow overcome some of the inherent regulatory hurdles that exist in our state. But, yes, I mean, we need to keep moving forward, we hope that the RFP cycle and IGP will help, we hope that improving PBR will help, and there's a bunch of other tools we have at our disposal as well that we can make use of.
Thank you, and Chair, if I could just, one more. Following up on what I think was some of the discussion from the last time you were here, there's going to be projects down the road that are inevitably not lowest cost but are there already on the grid. For example, HPower, which is such a huge chunk of the baseload on Oahu for the moment, but which, I think, 2030 or 2032, the PPA is up, or at least the contract with the city is up. If those are not even remotely the lowest-cost sources of energy at the time when the time comes, as you're looking forward, how do you assess protection for rate payers in that kind of case versus you have a bunch of legacy infrastructure that's probably stranded asset at that point? How do you deal with that?
Whenever we are, whenever an application for a project comes before us, whether it's to renew an old legacy project and extend it or to start from scratch, we have to consider a number of factors. Greenhouse gas emissions is a prominent factor in that consideration, as the Hawaii Supreme Court has kind of made clear over and over again, but there are other factors as well relating to the reliability of the grid, to affordability, to a number of other things that we've got to balance, and so that's the process we go through, we have to do that balancing act, we have to make sure the grid continues to function and that the lights stay on. There may be instances where, you know, like, you know, HECO is seeking to extend with Department of Health for a short amount of time to continue a legacy plant going so they can get another resource online if that's necessary. Those types of realities, pragmatic realities, are ones we will have to consider. We can't lose sight, though, of the overall goal of continuing to want to improve affordability, to want to accelerate the transition to renewable energy. I mean, those are still our guiding stars, but while we do that, we can't fall off a cliff, right? So we want to be responsible, but we also want to remember our guiding stars.
Sure, I appreciate that, and let me put this in a little more context. There have been a number of attempts over the years as projects have become increasingly more, say, challenging in some communities, regardless of their technology or whatever, you just tend to have a lot more scrutiny of the projects, and rightly so, and potential opposition. So there have been a number of attempts to look at, how do you learn from other places that are facing similar challenges but have successfully been able to create a path for a lot of those projects that eliminates a lot of the risk for investors, that also creates a more certain timeline for implementation and all the things. The PUC here has somewhat resisted any attempts to move away from the universal cost model, there's actually a better term for it that's escaping me at the moment, but essentially, everybody pays and benefits exactly the same, which doesn't account in many cases for host communities where I think you're seeing a lot of the tension and conflict arise. So in the future, as you have projects probably run into increasing levels of opposition, again, agnostic to technology or whatever, but just in general, how do you feel about changing that paradigm such that host communities can be provided additional benefits, separate and apart from, you know, community benefits packages and whatever that are subject to developer approval, but rather, for example, if you're creating X number of dollars in rate savings collectively, can a host community then be given just a little bit more of a benefit there, a little bit higher savings, because they're the ones that are hosting projects and provide a tangible nexus between a project that may be developed and the community in which it sits?
Short answer is yes, we are open to that. That is a topic of discussion in the equity docket that we opened, and we're looking beyond community benefit packages to other, other types of benefits to the community that, there's a nexus between the project that's being built and the benefit to the community beyond just, you know, potential lowering of rates, there might also be something to consider would be the resiliency of that community, right? You could include potentially in a project's design a microgrid that serves critical loads and other disaster-related needs so that the community could more successfully survive if they were, happen to be totally cut off. We've got, I don't know, something like 60% of our communities are sort of one road in, one road out, and are extremely vulnerable to getting trapped for a period of time without infrastructure support. So building up resiliency of those communities and maybe doing it in conjunction with new projects that come online that ideally are more community-driven from the outset, which is a real challenge in all kinds of different ways, but that's another goal, is trying to figure out how to make these things more community-driven rather than imposed on communities and learn from a number of lessons of the past. HECO's trying to do something, you know, that's related to this with the Renewable Energy Zone concept that's in the IGP, and that is not fully formed as a concept but is one that we support, you know, continuing to look at and improving. The idea there is that those zones are, kind of get community feedback and blessing ahead of time, and of time, and then developers know where they can go and have less opposition, an easier path to getting an interconnection faster. So if that concept concedes, that succeeds, that would be the kind of thing it would achieve.
Thanks. And Chair, the very last thing, maybe permissible. You know, in most other utility service areas, you have some form of contract situation where third-party entities can generate and sell power across the grid, paying some sort of requisite fee to the utility for the use of their poles and wires, essentially wheeling here as we've come to know it. How do you feel about that? Because that's been something that has been not permitted here. And there have been a number of state projects, much less other projects, that could have benefited from something like that with the University of Hawaii and others saving taxpayers a bunch of money. Where do you see that going, that mechanism kind of going? And ultimately, where do you see the utility going? Are they more a poles and wires distribution company opening up the grid? Or is it, where does that go?
Well, our Chair, Asensio, just recently committed to the legislature, and Commissioner Okuae and I support him, that regardless of what happens this legislative session, we are going to open a docket on wheeling generally to investigate and get to a conclusion by 2026, just bring it to conclusion as to what the state policy should be regarding whether we can open it up and allow more of that on the grid. We're interested in that. Before the disaster in Lahaina, one of my personal priorities was to try to start a new docket on intergovernmental wheeling because I felt like that was just an obvious thing. Like government entities and other public entities that don't have any consumer protection-type concerns relating to them should be allowed to produce power and share the benefits of that renewable energy with other government users of the grid. And that was sidelined because we needed to pivot and focus on the immediate needs of reliability and safety for the public after the disaster on Maui. But it's still something that's very prominent in my mind, is something we've got to deal with and see if we can make some progress there.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Members, any other questions?
Yeah, just a quick.
Senator.
Thank you. This conversation brought up something on the Big Island. With our steps towards renewable energy, having that firm power is important. We ran into a situation where we had photovoltaic on the west side, but it was very cloudy for a couple of days, unusual. But at the same time, we were dealing with a drought, and so the hydroelectric generation on the Hilo side was down, very unusual. But at the same time, the winds stopped blowing. And so it put us in a unique situation that ordinarily, because we have different facets in the portfolio, we shouldn't have had a problem, but we did. And going forward, as we're talking about the resiliency on microgrids or however you want to term, that tying those different energy projects together is what we're trying to do, but still we hit a problem. And so going forward, as we're making these decisions, I find an interesting conversation about wheeling. But I think we also have to think back on what is going to actually be firm. Because, again, Big Island, almost a perfect storm. Who would have thought that we'd be dry, cloudy, and no wind for three or four days? It did create a problem. So I just leave that as part of the conversation. Thank you, Chair.
Members, any other questions? Hopefully not, but most likely, I think for me as Chair of this committee, I will look back on this session as one of the years that the bill for climate change started to come due for the state of Hawaii, especially given the subject matter that we've had to address on this committee this year, not just HECO, but also insurance and several other items. The last time you were before this committee on the resolution that the Senate just passed out regarding the investigation of the Maui wildfire, there was a discussion about capacity in the PUC. And this conversation brought me back to that because essentially what I heard you say was that the resources necessary to allow the PUC to take the lead or to take a more active role in the investigations that are going on were beyond the scope of the PUC's capability. And it just seems to me like that that's just one small piece of everything that's going on under your purview. So how do you see that? And I guess maybe a more searching question would be in response to, I think, Senator Wakai's question in that hearing. Why haven't you guys come to us sooner and asked for a lot more resource? Because it seems like there are some real substantive justifications for that.
On that last point, I got corrected by my colleagues after that hearing. I guess we did seek more additional funds related to wildfire issues to be part of the governor's budget, but that I think it was somehow combined with the Attorney General's request in the ultimate budget that was submitted to the legislature. And I'm not the expert on exactly how it all went down, but we did initially, right after the disaster, seek to try to build up some resources. Traditionally, we haven't been general funded at all, obviously. We're just funded through the rate fees and so forth they get on utility bills. But I think the state of Hawaii generally, whether it's the PUC or some other agency, absolutely needs additional resources and competency to do on a statewide basis those types of forensic investigations and analysis, and even to review wildfire mitigation plans. We're going to have to come up with additional resources to do that effectively.
So again, we're sort of running short on time.
Yeah.
The ways and means chairs here, and I would like to yield to members who are coming in to ask questions. So get ready for that one.
Okay.
But I'm cutting you off because that's sort of what I was trying to preface. The wildfire investigation is just one sliver of what's going on. You've had multiple questions here about wheeling, about whether HECO should move to a poles and wires model, about renewable energy generation, about firm generation, and about how we're going to deal with the increasing instability that climate change is causing when it comes to our maintenance of the grid and service for the public. So I'm alarmed that now we have the PUC coming in and admitting, yeah, we need more money for the fire investigation. It sounds like you need more support for all of this stuff because we have capacity, as you alluded to, and I acknowledge, we have capacity in the ATF, in the county, and in the Attorney General's office that's already on that. So somebody's already on that. They may not be in the way we want, but no one else is on these other questions except for you. And it's pretty clear that there are just a lot of unanswered items there that you're kind of acknowledging and admitting here that you guys cannot handle. So why aren't you asking? And why haven't you asked sooner?
I don't know that I'd say we can't handle a lot of these issues. I think we are working hard to handle them as best we can. Should we have more resources? I don't, I think in the long term, yes. I've been here the least amount of time, so I feel uncomfortable speaking on behalf of the commission in terms of exactly what the resource needs are. I don't, I'm not the one on the commission that deals with the budget or requests to the legislature for additional funding. That hasn't been my role in the last 17 months. But I can see, through our discussions and through everything we know and the public, that I think we have a lot of work ahead of us. And as you said, is this the first notice of the bill coming due for climate change? In a major way, yes, but I'm sure we will have additional challenges ahead. And we need to prepare for them better than we have in the past. So that will take resources, it will take, you know, it's a balancing act for all of us, for the legislature as well. You've got multiple priorities. You've got to figure out what to do first, and we appreciate that. We do appreciate the support of the legislature, and we will do the best we can with the resources we have. But one of the last thing, we are, regardless again of what happens in this session, we are moving forward with the HIRA concept ourselves. We will do a surcharge on the large project utility interconnections that will help fund a HIRA and start updating the reliability standards that are already in place to start addressing some of these issues we care about. But that will also bring some more funds into the PUC and will allow us to turn some of our compliance officer folks into people who go out and do more work reviewing the quality and the safety of the infrastructure. That's one of the goals we have, is to be more involved in directly inspecting and reviewing what's happening in the field, in the real world.
Thank you. Senator De La Cruz.
Thank you. You may have covered it already, but it appears to me that the PUC is mainly reactive and not so much proactive. And just hearing your thoughts about, you're not really involved in the legislative component or the budget component, it would seem that the three of you would want to figure out, at least annually, what do you want to accomplish and what's involved in accomplishing that? So you may not have to be in the details, but you at least know how it's all connected because the three of you should be talking about that. How do you intend to help change the culture so you can be a lot more proactive? We've had a lot of these issues that we keep almost recycling. And I find that the legislature tends to be a lot more aggressive in urging the PUC to catch up with a lot of these issues, including things like firm renewable. And if we're constantly urging you and pulling the PUC along, then is that how this relationship is going to be in the future, that we're just urging you to do your job?
I hope not. I agree with you that we have a lot of opportunity and authority to be proactive. When I first came to the commission, the marching orders were kind of the priorities that I understood, was to try to improve the slow pace of a lot of the decision-making at the PUC, that there have been issues with just the PUC having docket churn. Things get caught up in that procedure and they never get to decision. So one of the things that my fellow commissioners and I have done our best to do and I think had some success in the last 17 months is moving things forward and not just, even though electricity remains the lion's share of our work, looking at all of the utilities that are before us and trying to keep everything moving in a timely manner. And I think we have been making a lot of progress in that area. I think we have.
That's just all playing catch-up.
Yeah, that's playing catch-up.
I'm talking about how do we take it so that you guys can be a lot more proactive? Because we have this 2045 goal.
Yep.
And we have a lot of bills now delaying interim goals later to 2045, trying to expand it, but still moving them all back later. So we're not holding anybody accountable to even meet the interim goals. And in many cases, there are no benchmarks for interim goals. They just have the end goal, and everyone thinks that, oh, in one year, we're going to be able to do it, between 2044 and 2045. How, why isn't the PUC working backwards, saying if this is the goal by 2045, what are the things that have to be in place from a regulatory point of view so we can meet these benchmarks? I don't find any discussion going on.
So I think that is the discussion we're having right now. I mean, when I got here, it was sort of catch-up, like you say. And now I think we are somewhat caught up and are ready to be more proactive. The IGP RFP process that is about to start is an example of that because it has these 18-month cycles for new projects to come in, much faster than the prior RFP mechanisms.
So what kind of discussions then, as you develop these interim goals, hopefully, what kind of discussions are you having with at least the committee chairs? Because some of this should include, what are the tax relief measures for other renewables other than solar, since solar is heavily subsidized by us? What else are we going to do to diversify our portfolio on our side? Because you can't provide tax relief. You can't purchase property. You can't do a lot of the things that we can do and that we should be doing. But we're getting very little direction from Office of Energy or the PUC on how we can even be more proactive. I don't find that occurring.
I thank you for your feedback on that. I haven't been involved in that level of policy discussion from legislative leadership and so forth. That's other, Chair Asensio in our commission is the person on point on those matters. So I'm not fully familiar with all the discussions that may have taken place. I'm not sure I can answer your question directly, but I hear you.
For instance, we give tax credits to solar.
Right.
But now when we're looking at firm renewables or any other type of renewable energy, how do we make sure that there's equity? Because if not, we're picking winners and losers by only giving certain technologies tax credits.
I think it's completely fair to assess and reassess the incentives that the state provides to make sure that we are getting forward to a balanced portfolio of resources. And that is directly in our statute, that we've got to consider a number of factors, not just greenhouse gases, not just one type of technology over another. That's not what we're supposed to do. So I mean, I support that conceptually. I haven't been involved in specific conversations with legislative leadership regarding. It hasn't been my role yet, but I support what you're saying conceptually.
Well, as you, as the three of you meet to discuss that, hopefully you can take all of these thoughts and come up with something that you can really present to us, even informally throughout the interim, so that we can have a lot more meaningful discussion, so we can prepare for next session as to what kind of tax credits, what kind of land acquisition, what kind of, I mean, I really believe Office of Energy should be looking at land acquisition as well so that they can do their own RFPs for renewable. You know, but it's hard. I feel we're a lot more proactive than a lot of the agencies are, which is kind of awkward, but I'm hoping you guys can change that.
I will absolutely have conversations with my fellow commissioners on those issues.
Thank you.
I commit to that.
Members, any other questions?
Just one. You know, assuming that the legislature does something on the HECO front in response to the Maui fires and some of the risk and other things that are out there, not knowing what that's going to look like yet, is there a role you see for the PUC in following up? So for example, if we lay out, here's the mechanisms and financing tools and whatever you guys have, a year or two from now, once we kind of get some direction on where the utility is headed and what the financial markets are doing, do you see a role for the PUC in stepping in at that point and sort of reviewing and saying, okay, this is working or it's not? Are you guys going to have, for example, your own follow-up package so that we're not the ones, to the Chair's point, the legislature having to kind of drive the bus here, figure out when the utility comes in and says, do this, or other stakeholders or IPPs come in and say, do that? It's not just us reacting because you guys have way more expertise and way more on-the-ground knowledge than we do.
I think that's a reasonable, good suggestion. Certainly, like with the wildfire mitigation plan, that's going to be something that we would be reviewing and would have to comment on and give feedback to the legislature as to how it's going, whether we think it's effective or not. I hope that a mitigation fund won't be needed. If it's established, we hope it doesn't need to get tapped into again anytime soon, but that would be another type of thing. Securitization will come before the PUC. We'll have to look at that very carefully if that passes the legislature. And under the current terms of the bills I'm familiar with, we have a very prominent role there in being the last gatekeeper to make sure that it's being done in the public interest and responsibly. So I think we would absolutely have an interest in giving feedback to the legislature as to how it went, whether or not changes need to be made in the concept or the mechanism. And we need to have those kind of conversations. So yes.
I raise that because we're obviously not the only place going through this right now, but there have been other utilities and other service areas that have been through bankruptcy and have had access to whatever their respective state's mechanisms are they're putting forward, which is great. But in one case, for example, right now, I'm thinking of, there's a utility in the southwest who's went through this whole process, that had access to securitization and other mechanisms with the same intent of providing a financially stable path forward. And fast forward a couple of years now, rates are up in that service territory over $30 per month. Meanwhile, the utilities had their most profitable couple of years in its history. And so there's a lot of moving parts that can lead to perhaps unintended consequences. And the folks who are going to know first before us, other than the angry emails we'll get from the public for sure, would be the PUC. And so I think having some sort of expectation that you're going to step in to be able to evaluate this stuff and come back to us with recommendations would be really, really important. evaluate this stuff and come back to us with recommendations would be really, really important.
Okay, I hear you. I thank you for that. If there was a Senate resolution specifically, you know, giving us a deadline to give you a report, that would be one easy mechanism. I'm a little bit of a novice in terms of the interaction between the PUC as an agency and the legislature on sort of an ongoing informal basis. So I don't know all of the normal ways we do it, but I'm supportive of that type of dialogue continuing continuously, and we'll do my best to try to facilitate that.
So I regret to inform you that we need to end this hearing at 11:15. We have other members who have come forward and requested the opportunity to ask you questions, and I have at least five more questions to ask you. So I'm going to be inclined at this point to recommend that we defer decision-making on your nomination to next week, Thursday, April 11th at 9:30 a.m. in this room, so that all the members who have questions can ask you questions. My inclination is that it's not a reflection on you, it's just the fact that this has stimulated a lot of very important and substantive discussion among the members. And we got a bunch of late GMs, and I wanted to try and get you guys all taken care of on one day, and we failed. So on that note, I will acknowledge Senator De La Cruz for his question.
I just had one more question. You know, it seems to be the trend, unfortunately, that we're having a lot more rolling blackouts. I mean, the Big Island, and if it wasn't for the power plant in Schofield, Oahu would have really been hit bad. And so we had to rely on the military to make sure that we had continuous power. What is the PUC going to do to make sure that that's not an issue? And why are we depending on military bases to support the grid? I find that that's kind of an awkward situation to be in. And is our portfolio of energy not that reliable that we have to now depend on military bases for continuous power throughout Oahu? If we had a lot more firm renewable, that wouldn't be the case. So how is the PUC going to address this?
So we agree that there are greater concerns about adequate utility resources, generation resources than even the utility thought. The rolling blackout situation we had on Oahu surprised the utility, it seemed to us.
I don't think it surprised us. We've been talking about firm renewable for several years.
That's true, but the confluence on that specific day, they were surprised that it happened to that extent because they have a margin of around 30% that they seek to maintain to as a reserve, but they needed about 200 additional megawatts on that specific day because of, you know, no solar, no wind, because of issues in the weather, and then also some issues with maintenance and other plants going down all at the same time. And they were really left very short on Oahu, right? 200 megawatts is a substantial part of our generation mix. So I think that's true on, obviously on Hawaii Island, it's true on Maui, and it's true on Oahu, that all three of those islands need more attention to development of new resources to bring online to make sure that we don't have those types of situations. And some firm resources are absolutely necessary as part of that. They are proposed as part of RFP III, there are a number of firm resources on all of these islands that are proposed, and we will do our best to try to move those things through the process quickly. Every single project that's proposed obviously has a kind of a lengthy cycle to actually get it up and running, but we want to try to make that faster. That's been a very high priority of ours.
So is the RFP a piecemeal approach, or where is the holistic plan that shows that the RFP is a component of the holistic plan? Because I go back to some of these other technologies which may need some assistance but won't need long-term assistance, like unfortunately, solar has had long-term assistance. We can provide that assistance to make sure there's a diverse portfolio. But we're not finding, going back to that, any kind of dialogue between the PUC and the legislature that tries to ensure that both sides are doing what they can to have a diverse portfolio.
The PUC is not traditionally, in my understanding, a planning agency. It's more of a regulatory agency that approves-
No, that's fine. But then why aren't you asking the Office of Energy? Where is the plan? So if you're not going to do the plan Office of Energy, then maybe we have to. And then you ask us for the resources for planning. But why are we continuing to do one docket at a time without any kind of made, kind of plan?
Right.
Something holistic, something comprehensive.
HECO's integrated grid plan, which was recently completed and we accepted earlier this year, is a starting point. It does contain a lot of information that's useful.
But that's-
But it's not everything you're talking about.
Yeah, that's like the fox guarding the hen house. So you're going to have the utility come up with the plan.
Right.
Is that, I don't know if everyone feels that that's the best approach.
We did not approve that plan, we just accepted that it had been filed, right?
I'm just saying, going back though, it should be Office of Energy, PUC, the legislature, not the tail wagging the dog.
That's a fair point.
Just follow up on that real quick?
Okay.
Because there were two-
Last question, though.
Yeah, yeah. There were two other things that I think Chair had brought up with respect to the rolling blackouts and all of that. And two of those things are fixable, I think, beyond just, you know, putting in new generation. One was that the number of projects that should have been online at that point were not as a result of a whole number of things in the process. So I guess the question is, what can the PUC do there to make sure that there's-
Backup plans.
Yeah, not only backup plans, but also clear timelines, because everybody's relying on that.
Yeah.
And then secondly, the large battery storage that could have been used that day was simply just not charged from any source, could have been charged from Kahului or any power plant, regardless of power. So how do we, is there something we can do to both those points?
HECO has learned some lessons regarding how to utilize that new battery storage facility. It was at 80% charge, is my understanding, the morning of the rolling blackouts, but if it was 100%, that would have been better. It's not a panacea, though, it's not big enough to have resolved the problems that day. They needed 200 additional megawatts, and that doesn't output that much. So yes, there's more that we can do on those scores specifically, and HECO is getting better in its RFP process of overestimating what it needs, like for example, on the RFP III for Hawaii Island, I believe they are seeking 153% of their needs, their projected needs. And so, because you know the projects always fall out, right? So they're going overboard to try to make sure that whatever does come online, it at least gets them to 100. And that is the type of thing we're looking at encouraging and pushing for, right, to go overboard. Like, we need to go overboard at this point. We haven't anticipated all of the problems that occur with grid operation as well as we should have, and we're going to need to add some additional resources to give us redundancy, to give us resiliency, backup. We can't just rely on everything working perfectly all the time, and not that HECO's been doing that, but it's been obviously getting too close to the line and we've been having problems.
Wait, sorry.
I'll say my mistake on the battery.
We have one more minute.
So when you say HECO learned a lot, what about the PUC? They didn't learn a lot? And why are we continuing to say, oh, it's HECO's responsibility, HECO's learning? It should be, I guess HECO should be learning, but so should the PUC on how it needs to evolve so they can better manage the situation?
We're doing our best to learn as well. I mean, that's why I'm here. I hope I'm demonstrating some reasonable fluency with the issues that we're dealing with and the specific facts. I try myself to be up to speed on those things and try to understand how to get to the right answer, but yes, we do too.
Just going back to Senator Lee's point, though, once you understand those issues, what are the timelines, what are the deadlines, so that those issues can be resolved in a timely manner, being a lot more proactive instead of just acknowledging that these are issues and then nothing happens?
Right. Well, the IGP RFP process where it has 18-month development cycles, like much faster development cycles to get new projects in, and also to kind of accommodate for projects falling out, they can come back in to the queue as quick, you know, a lot faster rather than waiting several years for a new RFP. That's an example of the kind of thing we've been pushing and will continue to find other similar solutions.
Just not as holistic, though. So that's where-
Yeah, we're trying to be holistic, but we're not, yeah, I agree, there's improvement. There's improvement to be done, for sure.
And on that note, I'm going to slip in. I'm going to recess this hearing, and we're going to reconvene next week, Thursday, April 11th at 9:30 a.m. in this room 229 for additional questions. And what I'll do to be fair to the members and also to you, Mr. Yost, is we'll be sending out a memorandum to the members of the Senate, asking that if there are additional questions that we'd like you to answer, that they submit them to my office so that we can distribute them to you by close of business on Monday. And if you would so choose, it's up to you, would like to respond to some of those or any of the other questions brought up in this hearing today in writing, that you please do so the day before the hearing.
That sounds fine, thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, Wairi.